The study session, the City Commission Tuesday, April 8th, 2014. Does anybody have any, or go for the head roll call, of course.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here.
Does anybody have any future items to move forward before the study session?
I do. I would like to have a work session on, with Summer being here, I'd like to talk about the homeless population in Oregon City. The impact on business.
All right.
Is there consensus on that?
Yeah.
One other thing I want to ask about that. Did we ever put onto the future agenda list the landscape and use of recycled materials as credits for storefront grants?
Would that be urban renewal?
I don't even remember talking about it. I think it would be.
Oh, I can look. For city commission or urban renewal?
I think it was, it was city commission.
For storefront grant? Oh, yes, we did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it city commission or?
But that's under.
Urban.
Yeah, I think it would be.
I thought it was under urban renewal. But that was a good catch, Kathy.
I'll have to, I'll verify this, yeah. I'll check on that.
Oh, I do, I do have one other item. It was asked of me today if there's a way to put together a group of volunteers that could give tours at the mill site. And I.
I wouldn't be comfortable with the liability and the agreements that we needed to reach with the trustee and Portland General Electric for access.
Right.
And it's contingent on staff being out there as part of those tours.
But I think we are going to try to do some tours at, like, first city celebration and different events throughout the year like we did last year. We're going to keep that.
Because I have, almost weekly, I have somebody asking.
Yeah.
You know, if they wanted to contact our office, we'll start making a list of people that want to go and we'll try to round them up when it comes time for a tour.
And if you need more tour guides, I'm willing to help, too.
Because we have utilized, we have utilized volunteers as long as with a staff member, like when we did this over the summer, tours, and we're going to try and do that again this summer as well, do so once on the weekends.
With that, we'll go through a presentation by the Library Project Architect Sid Scott. Did you want to make an introduction first?
Yeah, I would like to introduce our architect for the Library Project, Sid Scott, from Scott Edwards and Associates. And also tonight, our project manager Charlie Ballman from Shields, Obletz and Johnson is here. And I wanted to just let you guys put a face to the names, and Sid has a little presentation.
Very good. You want both to come forward, or?
No, I'll let Sid. I'll let you do that.
It'd be fun if you could do my presentation and.
Not as well as you.
Very brief. Good evening, my name is Sid Scott. I'm principal with Scott Edwards Architecture and delighted to be here. We're very excited about getting started on the library project, a project with great potential, and we're, again, very excited about it. I wanted to give you just a little background about us and then had some questions for you and see where we go from there.
Great.
Okay. So, a little about my firm. I'm a forty-person office in Portland, Portland design firm. We're a very studio-based kind of firm, which means we have no offices. Everybody sits in the same kind of space. Mine's a little messier than everybody else's, but otherwise, we're pretty much all the same. And we do a lot of work with municipalities in the metro area and really all throughout Oregon. We've done a lot of projects, public-related, and been through a lot of community outreach and that sort of thing, so we're very excited about this project. As I was telling Mo when we started on the project is that you're not just hiring a couple of us, you're really hiring our whole office, because we do a lot of in-house workshops, charrettes, and we get a lot of input, so there'll be a lot of, a lot of eyes on your project from our office. Our team, we're the architect for the project, will be leading the charge. We also have a library consultant, Humphries-Poley Architects, out of Denver, who we've worked with on a number of projects, and they're going to provide both the historical part, they have a real specialty in historical preservation, and also have done more than seventy libraries. So they bring a lot of expertise to the project. Our civil and structural team is Harper-Hoff-Petersen-Regalas, and they've done a lot of work in Clackamas County and Oregon City. Our mechanic-electrical folks, interface engineering, I've worked with them for about twenty-five years. And our landscape, Lang O'Hanson, a lot of experience here in Oregon City, and they're very familiar with your park. And so that's our team. We've worked together on a number of projects and everybody is really excited to get going. Just a few examples of our work, the Sunnyside Library, which is a project for Clackamas County that we finished a couple of years ago. It was a educational building that was built as temporary classrooms, and then the county took it and wanted to convert it into a library and asked us to take a look at it. And so we did a renovation and also in addition to it. So this is what it looks like today. And they're getting great reviews on their, their library and are very, very happy with it. Very nice interior spaces, tying it all together. We did some fun things like the barcodes, actually in the building, if you go through and use your phone, and on the barcode, the dictionary will pop up. So, lots of little subtle things in there. They also were very active, the community was very active in this project. A group of woodworkers built the gondolas for the books, special areas. And then we did chalkboards in there, thinking that people would do art on them, and the first art that was done, everybody loves it and hasn't changed yet, so. I don't think it has the nerve to go and start erasing it. And the new part, very open and lots of natural light connecting to the, the park location that it's located there. Another project we recently completed is for the city of Lincoln City. Their existing library, which we renovated from one end to the other. It's about a twenty thousand square foot, or twenty-six thousand square foot library. And we got lead gold on this project. Actually went through the lead process and they were very, very successful with that. A little bit of the HPAs work, Humphries-Poley's work, again, they've done over seventy libraries. They did the first carbon-neutral library in the country. So a lot of lead work, so we're very excited about working on that together with them. And they've done eight Carnegie library renovation projects, which is, you know, perfect tie-in here, obviously. And then a number of other historical buildings where they've done both the work to get them on the National Register or doing renovations to them. Little sampling of some of their work. And then where we are in terms of process, we're, we're getting started and very excited to do that. The first phase that I like to do is the move-in and understand phase, and I did that last Friday afternoon, where I came out and just hung out at the library and watched how people use the library and get a good feel for what you currently have. And fortunately, nobody thought I was a creepy guy, just hanging out, you know, that kind of thing. But it's really a wonderful way to see how you currently work. So as we start to go through the process, we have a good basis of information about where you're currently at. The second part is precedent study, and so we're going on two tours. We're doing a local tour, meaning Oregon, and, well, actually, Oregon or Washington, on this coming Monday, April fourteenth. So we're going to do an all-day tour to look at three examples of other libraries. And then on April twenty-fifth, we're going to be going to Denver, where we'll see another, probably five to six libraries there. So it gives you a great range of what's out there and what's current in terms of library design. We'll be doing what we call a mind-breaking exercise, which sounds like it might be a little violent. It's not, it doesn't hurt or anything. And we're going to be doing that on April thirtieth and May first. It's a two-day process that we'll be going through with staff and stakeholders, and really it's a way to just open up our minds and think about how, what the library should be, how it could function, different ways it could function, all of those kinds of things. And it's really a wonderful process where you're able to get a lot of input from folks who sometimes in a group meeting may not say anything. We have an exercise, for instance, where we show images of different areas, like one will be how you add on to a Carnegie library. And we've got examples from all over the country on how to do that. So we show slides, and then we ask people to write their comments down on the little yellow or, you know, sticky pads. And so they don't have to say anything, but they can just write it down, and then we put them into categories, and it really starts to give us a trend of what the thinking is in those areas. So it's a great way to get people thinking, but also very free to, you know, free to comment and that kind of thing and participate. So we're very excited about getting that process going. And then on the evening of April thirtieth, we'll have an open community meeting where we'll do a smaller version of the mind-breaking exercise with folks. It's a great way to get the process going and really get some community input. So some examples here of going through the process. We have one which is really fun, is where we lay out what is the site of where the building can sit, and then you have, everybody gets strips of paper that might say like "entry" or "sunny place to read a book" or, you know, those kind of things. And then we have them, place them on the site, so we get a sense about where they think would be the places on the site or the existing building where you do these kind of activities. And it really does start to shape how the, the library may flow. So it's a, it's a really nice, fun, interactive kind of process. And then the other part that I'll be doing is setting up a studio actually in the library. Well, I'll be out here, one of my staff will be out here once a week, where we're going to be working actually in the library, so it's an opportunity for folks to stop by, informally talk about what's, what their thoughts are about what's going on, and a nice way to keep more real-time updates with folks. So it's, you know, if somebody's interested, they can really get to the information. So we're looking forward to getting that started. And the other thing, Mo and I are going to a library conference in Salt Lake, May fifteenth and sixteenth, which is put on by the Library Journal, and it's a fabulous conference and really brings the latest thinking in library design, which is ever-evolving. So it's, it's a great way to really see what's going on. So that's a little recap about us, and any questions I can answer, or?
I want to know how, you're going to set up a little space in the library.
Now, emphasis was on little. You did say little. Yeah, Mo has this tiny table, it's about this big around.
Yeah.
We already figured out we're going to set it right next to the fireplace.
I was thinking maybe in the fireplace.
In the fireplace. We have to talk about that.
He's too tall.
Really have to scrunge down. But yeah, we actually found a spot and we can have an area that we can then pin up information about what's going on, so current information about the library design will be right there.
I think it's great that you're looking at being innovative, because people have mentioned, you know, where does a library play a role now, that we, we have so much technology around us.
Right.
And I, I think it's still relevant, but really, you know, shifting it and showing how, you know, a modern library is and how it works and how it can meet people's needs is good.
Great. Yeah, technology has advanced so much, and, you know, I think the right thing is, is embrace that, and, you know, that's something, that's, that's where we're headed and that's where libraries need to be headed. Any other questions? Yes?
Just a comment. I, I appreciate the fact that there's a history of working with the Carnegie libraries, because I think that's, I, I will say that several of us on the commission over the years were not that passionate about, or, or I should say, we were a little concerned about how this Carnegie center could be built into a larger structure. It was a great concern for me for a long time, until I saw some of those pictures.
Yeah.
And really started to visualize what it could be, because of my concern for that important building. And I think that what I'm finding is, that's really what's splitting the pros and cons on this project, is, you know, people, people's feelings about that building and how it will look afterwards. And so I think that the experience working specifically with Carnegie buildings, I think is going to play a big piece in that. But also what you were talking about in terms of your, the charrettes or the, the, the community involvement piece, where you're having people talk about those kind of things and looking at visual pictures. Because that's obviously what happened with these, these pictures, too, and that, that dialogue came about, well, you know, in terms of the massing of the building and, and the way that it actually connects with the park and things like that. So I think, I think everyone in this town wants a brand-new library, and we've been waiting a long time for it. And I think that, that some of the debate is really going to come down to those, those specifics. And so we all want it to happen, and I think anything we can do to make sure that we are focusing on the importance of that historic building and how we honor that in a way that, that fits all of our needs, and I think, I think it's doable. I think it's very possible, or else I wouldn't be supporting it as, as I am now. I feel good about it. And I, I think there's a way to make sure everyone feels good about it, too. So I appreciate that effort.
Right, appreciate the comments. And that is so important, because it's such an iconic building in the middle of a park.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, we, we get the importance of that, definitely. I was curious about the images that had been done previously, and this is just something for me that would be really useful, is to get some feedback from you about, you know, what you've seen so far, and, you know, is it, that's where you want to go, or you want to look at ideas, you know, get some feedback from you, so we're, make sure that we're, you know, headed in the right direction.
I presume these are going to be available to the public as they're, as they're thinking about their, you know, it's.
Right.
It's, it's driven me to the point that, you know, that's what I'm looking, that's what I'm thinking about when I see it.
Right.
But that's because I haven't seen other alternatives. I think the, the middle piece was the notion that to keep people concerned about the lack of recreational open space. But I, I like the idea of the new library having a lot of daylight coming into it. I think, I think that is really important. If enough light, daylight comes through, I actually don't need these. So I like, I like the idea of a whole lot of light coming into them. So I'm kind of driven by the images I see, but then, of course, I, I don't know what the, might, there might be some great alternatives out there.
Well, that was, I guess my question is, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, you're okay with us looking at options on this and really, you know, vetting out what is really the best idea to come forward with.
Because my idea is, is I like the center one, because it highlights the old, the original building.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't detract in any way. The, the end one, you know, takes away too much of the park.
Mm-hmm.
The other one just kind of overwhelms and dwarfs.
The two-story one, yeah, huh?
Right, and I like the idea, and I see, you know, a lot of light on the ends and in between, and I really like the building standing out.
Mm-hmm. So really enhancing the, the appearance of the existing Carnegie.
Right.
Great.
Now, I like the first one with the double stores.
The two-story.
Two-story there, because it's a smaller footprint and there's like the light up on top.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, you know, we're open to anything you guys can come up with, actually.
Good. Well, I wanted to make sure that was the case.
I think so.
Come back with something, you're like, what are you doing? You know?
I'm very interested to see what comes out of the public process, but what I've heard so far is, you know, please don't take too much of the park. We want to keep as much of the park as possible.
Right.
And then also, you know, please incorporate the brick, this is what I've heard from a lot of people, and really make it tight in. I mean, I, I know we can't make it look exactly like the building, because we don't want to misrepresent, you know, the original footprint of the building, but at the same time, you know, there's some key things, like the columns and the brick, key elements of the building in that is, people love so much, that it'd be nice to incorporate at least some of that.
Mm-hmm. So bringing some of the existing building elements into the addition, whatever that is, great. Okay?
I'll add to what's already been said in that, I don't know how realistic the, the center one is, but, but what's great about that in, in concept is, when you look from the street, the library, you know, is kind of hidden there underneath.
It's all tucked behind it.
And I think there's ways of doing that, another way by scaffolding, you know, landscaping or various, I don't know, but I'm sure there's other opportunities to do something similar to that, that would be really interesting. I, I think, though, we need it, I think it looks to me that we probably want to see something two stories. I know there's some problems with that in terms of staffing, but I, I like the idea of having, minimizing the, the, the impact in, in terms of the park by going up a little bit. However, I don't see that you can go up without doing exactly what they did with those, with the open windows, because if you had, if that building mass was all brick or all solid, it just wouldn't work.
Wouldn't work.
And so I, I think that was a great solution to say, wow, you're going to see through these. And, and actually, that, that first version wouldn't even work if you had bookshelves going to the ceiling either. So, I mean, you would really have to do it in a way where it is open and you could see through it and see the trees, and, and I think that would be amazing. So, but are there other ideas out there? I'm sure there is.
Yeah, good question.
Yes.
That is, the original library is unreinforced masonry, right?
You've got seismic.
Seismically, it's been seismically reinforced.
When the restoration occurred.
Yeah. What year?
You know, that I don't know.
Two thousand nine, I think.
Two thousand.
No, it was, it was before I got here, so it was probably two thousand three, two thousand two.
I think it's two thousand and one.
Oh, two thousand what? It was two thousand.
It was like one of the late nineteen ninety UBCs at that point, I think.
I was just wondering if that was going to be part of it.
Well, it's a great question, because it did change. We went to a higher seismic zone, all of those things. So that's part of getting started, is looking to see where you're currently at with the building, and then when we add on to it or refurbish it, what needs to be done.
Right.
One, one thing, I didn't think about it till now, but the, the, the parkways behind and so forth, I, I don't know if we have any roofs in Oregon City that are public spaces, whether it's possibility to actually, in a, in a nice way, make the roof an actually a public space as well.
Interesting idea.
If Mo had not come up with these three projects, I don't, these three pictures, I don't know that we would have even had any idea, and we probably all would have said, that's crazy. So we're open to.
Good, good.
Whatever you guys might come up with.
But the visuals are so helpful.
They are, they are, absolutely.
A basketball on top. That's what.
I love that.
Another element to the park.
Ah, there you go. There you go.
That's great.
When we build a public work facility, we'll put a basketball, we'll put a football court on top of there.
Quietly read a book and the ball bumping above.
Yeah, right.
That'd be kind of crazy. Well, I'm very excited to see how this turns out. I'm very excited, because I've heard you don't need a new library and blah, 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 because of the internet, but then I've heard it's very important to have it for your community, so I'm very excited to have this project.
I would argue that for many people, you need a library because of the internet.
I agree.
That's true.
I've heard both sides, yeah. So I'm excited.
And our library circulation does very well.
Yeah.
A lot of people buy books and don't use a library, and a lot of people use the internet, but a lot of people can't afford either.
And I was having lunch with somebody, and I have to give Mo a compliment about the library and how visionary she is, and how she embraces technology in the library world, so.
Why, thank you. I'm blushing.
She's the one that's driving this, so it's going to work.
Programming.
The bar high.
Setting the bar high.
Sets the bar high. Any other thoughts?
Well, I just wanted to express, well, there may be other thoughts, I want to express my appreciation for, for our city manager and our library director to be very conscious about spending too much money before the bond passes. And what I think you've done is you're, you're staggering your activities, so when the bond passes, you'll be in a position to move forward on these things quite rapidly.
Absolutely.
So we can actually get things underway this year.
Right.
And I think that's great, and I have to say, the fiscal responsibility on your part to make sure we minimize the cost ahead of time, I think is great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks a lot. Looking forward to coming back with some ideas.
Yay. We're excited to see them.
So any other comments?
Okay, don't close.
Don't close.
Close? Yeah, leave it alone. Just leave it as is.
Just leave it.
Just leave it. Don't touch the computer.
Just walk away.
Walk away slowly.
Technology at its best.
That's right. Actually, Nancy, I'm not going to touch it either. Do you want to make sure, do you want to make sure it's going?
You bet.
The last thing I need is to, so I got to thinking about this presentation and, and the agenda, and just, we're kind of fun on the front, fun on the back, not so fun in the middle.
The best part is between the two ends of the sandwiches.
It's an Oreo cookie.
Wastewater Oreo.
We're going to look at a sewer video.
Sewer sandwich.
Sean.
If you're an Oreo cookie, you're the best part, John.
Give us a minute here.
Is, is this your?
Number one up there?
Video, the movie, that's the movie.
So while, while that's going on, I'm, I'll go ahead and introduce some people who you already know, but Eric Wargren and Alita Roman-Goodrich are in the back of the room. They're here, they're here for a good reason, because they put a, a lot of work into this master plan. In fact, Eric's the project manager on the master plan, so he's been working pretty closely with, with Jim Hansen from Brown and Caldwell. And Alita kind of came on board here when we started seeing some of the results and realizing how that, those results have an impact on our community. And I'm also going to mention, this is a team effort tonight, we're going to have Jim, I'm going to talk a little bit, Jim's going to provide a fair amount of information. We're actually going to have, Bill will give you all the bad news, if I can do that. I can focus that there. So we are here to talk to you about our sanitary sewer master plan update. We've got a fair amount of collection system in Oregon City. We are only talking about collections. We are not the owners of the wastewater treatment plant, that's a Tri-Cities facility, and Wes manages that at the county. But we've got a hundred and forty-eight miles of gravity pipeline, we've got twelve major pump stations, we've got over ten thousand customers, and with, and with that, you do master plan updates. We haven't done our, our last master plan was in two thousand and three, so it's time to do our update. Today's update is about summarizing the master plan, highlighting some of our findings and share implications, and then make recommendations on how we think we should proceed. And again, just a warning, this presentation's not necessarily focused on all the good news, so I'll just say that now. Next slide, if you could, Jim. So we want to provide you a couple of brief explanations about the process and our approach. We want to talk to you about a five-year regulatory storm versus a ten-year future-conditioned design storm, provide you a brief explanation of the existing conditions and future conditions modeling that we're running. But our main objective is to provide a detailed explanation of what we found to be some existing system deficiencies, and we've had, we have several capacity constraints which exist in the system today. We want you to be informed of these deficiencies and what these deficiencies mean for Oregon City and what we see as the best strategy for managing system growth within Oregon City. So we'll also go over a CIP and talk about next steps. I guess I just want to start off by saying the amount, we've taken some time with this master plan, and we've taken some time to build a hydraulic model that includes a lot of details, and we have a high level of confidence in the information that the model is sharing, is, is showing and proving, and so we feel real, real good about that. We've, we have eighteen different locations where we pulled down flow data, either from a portable flow monitor that we put in or from our pump stations where we record real-time data on pump stations. So we use that, we did, we put those portable flow monitors in the ground for about three months and were able to record a couple of good-sized rain events, which is kind of what you look for in sewer modeling. I want to emphasize that we have a storm sewer system and a sanitary sewer system, but the sanitary is what we're looking at right now, and I know that it doesn't seem like your sanitary system would be influenced by rain, but it is, and most are. So we, we're going to talk a fair amount about that. We put a lot of energy into calibrating the model, making sure what the results look like or what we're finding in the field as well. We've done lots of maps and various scenario runs, and so we really feel like we know this topic kind of like the back of our hand now.[1724.12] kinda like the back of our hand now. So, again, we'll go through a CIP detailed cost analysis and provide some of that information for you. Next slide. So, this is, is really a pretty simple concept, but it gets quite confusing as you start running different scenarios and different kinds of storm events. But basically, we started our process with the decision-making process of what kinda design storm do you build? You know, do you, do you wrap your master plan around? What are you designing for? We decided on a 10-year, 24-hour storm event, which is about three inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period. After we saw the results of that, and saw kinda how that, you know, what the implications were of that, we said, "We need to run the five-year storm," which is really the DEQ required storm. And it's a smaller storm, it's a three-inch storm, but it really says, you know, you're gonna see problems. These, these yearly events mean you're gonna see problems, you know, in five years, every five years you may see problems if you design your system to a five-year storm event. But again, that's the regulatory storm. So, we felt like running the five-year storm was to help us, because we saw several problems in the system, and we wanted to prioritize how to fix those problems. But our 10-year storm is what we're really kinda looking at for our solutions. So, I think, I, the other piece is the existing conditions versus future conditions. We run the model to look at what our current conditions are. We do that so that we can confirm through field verification that the model is telling us what we really think is, you know, what the model will tell us. One thing, we can go out and verify that. And then, we run future conditions that basically takes those existing conditions in that model run and kind of extrapolates, extrapolates that out to build out. So, a lot of energy went into this whole discussion, this whole, these, all these various scenarios. We've run other scenarios as well, based on specific developments. But the, the main thing that I wanted to say there, I believe, was that it's complex. But we're gonna show you some results based on the five-year. We're also gonna show you the 10-year. Just know that our intent is to build solutions that, that will be focused on a larger, larger storm event. So, let's see, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Jim with Brown and Caldwell. Again, don't, don't blame the messenger here. I think, you know, we.
He keeps saying that.
It's getting worse by the hour.
Should you be nervous there, sitting there, huh?
So, Jim, you wanna go ahead?
Okay. Thank you very much, very much, John. I'm, I'm the project manager with Brown and Caldwell, and I have a team of engineers who participate at various parts of this project. As John indicated, we have prepared a hydraulic, hydrologic hydraulic model to represent the collection system, which is a, a huge step forward from the previous master plan, which basically used a spreadsheet. So, we have a dynamic model that can represent what's really happening during a storm event, and I hope to be able to show you a sample of that. We have, as John said again, we've calibrated the model, so, so that we have confidence in, in what we're seeing. And we have had a staff, maintenance staff, help us look at the results and confirm that, yes, they have seen surcharging or other problems throughout the system during the various storm events that we're looking at. So, the first set of results I wanna show you is that five-year storm event, and this is for the existing condition. This is what you have right now, today. And, and again, this is the five-year storm.
Can I stop you? What is surcharging?
Surcharging is when a sewer has more water in it than the, than the pipe can hold by design. So, if there's, we'll show you an example of that.
I was gonna say, you got great graphics for this.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to that real soon for that. But it's basically a condition that we like to avoid. Surcharging in the extreme can result in basement backups, can result in flow coming out of manholes. So, we, we don't like to see, we like to keep sewage and water in the pipe and not anywhere else.
Thank you.
So, we, we ran the five-year event, and this is the minimum design event that DEQ would, would suggest that you use. If you go to almost any other state in the country, they use a longer storm interval, you know, 10 or 20 years. Oregon and EPA have been at odds on this issue for a number of years, and it's not settled yet. So, we recommended not just going with the minimum, because we think that those rules are gonna change ultimately, and it'll probably be a higher bar that's set. So, we ran the model for the existing condition, and what you see are the problem areas. And really, there's not a lot. We have several of the older pipes downtown, 12th, 13th, Division, Lynn Avenue, and then Hazelwood. These are all areas that we observed in the model as surcharging. If you look very carefully, there are two yellow dots. One of them is on Hazelwood, and one of them is over on Division. That's where the model predicted that we would have flooding during that five-year, three-inch storm event. And we have had confirmation on most of those locations, including the Hazelwood, that there in fact is considerable surcharging in that area. The other sewer is the Highway 99 sewer, runs right along the waterfront. That is actually a Tri-City sewer. We observed from the modeling that it surcharges, but we also know that that sewer, sewer has manhole covers that are bolted down. So, that pipe can act like a pressure pipe, so it can surcharge without actually creating an overflow condition, as long as it doesn't get too far along. So, we're not too concerned about that one. Here's a close-up of the Hazelwood sewer, and hopefully here you can see the, the yellow dot a little bit better along Warner Parrot Road. Again, maintenance staff have reported there had been backups in this area before, and we see quite a bit of surcharging along there. Now, I'm not an electrical engineer, and that may be my downfall right now, 'cause I'm going to attempt to go and show you a video. So, here's a result of our model, and this is the beauty of the model, that you watch the blue line. That's water in the pipe. And as the storm moves along, you can see at the, the left side of the screen that, wow, that blue line, the darker blue line, is what we call the hydraulic grade line. That is actually the water surface. So, if I can run that again.
That's surcharging there.
So, we start off with very little flow in the pipe, but as the storm comes through, more and more water backs up. And you can see it's worse at the left end of the screen than it is the right. So, that's telling us, is, you know, that, that pipe is either too small a diameter, or there's not enough slope to it, or a combination of, of the two. And, and so, this is one of the tools we have. It's, it's a great tool for helping us understand where the problem areas are throughout the city. This is another shot of the Hazelwood area. I wanted to give you a sense of the area that is impacted by this backup. So, if, 'cause we were talking about, well, what do we do in this area in terms of future growth? So, the, the darker purple line indicates the, what we call the tributary or contributory area that, that sends flow to this particular sewer. So, if there were gonna be any actions on the city's part in terms of looking at how to, you know, if there needs to be a restriction on growth or something, this would be the area that is impacted. And in this particular case, it's about 224 acres.
What? No.
200.
No, not 224. I don't think that's right.
That's not right. That's the number I thought I had, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll touch.
Touch on that?
Touch on that.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Absolutely. The purple area is the one that impacts the sewer system, or are they still tied into other segments, right? This, the purple area is the area that drains to this sewer. To the Hazelwood sewer. So, everything else is draining to it? Everything else goes a different direction, yes. And you can see from this, it's kinda bounded on the southeast from Central Point Road, and almost down to Boynton Street on the southwest, and then the, the northwest boundary and the northeast boundary, a little bit more jagged. But all the flow from that area goes to this particular sewer.
So, this is a map that, that I'm gonna go through. So, I'll just describe this. If you, if you look, you can kinda tell where Hazel, where that Hazelwood line is. You see the same shape in a smaller color, but, or in a smaller version. But these are all those areas, and just showing you the sewer basins that are, what we consider constrained impact areas. So, in green, it's highlighting the areas, and where we have properties that will, until we make some corrections, are gonna be limited in what we can allow to happen there in terms of adding additional flow to our sewer system. So, the key, a couple of things I wanna explain. The, the lower piece is, is a basin that we call our Settlers Point Basin. It's a little different than the others in that that basin is constrained mostly due to a sewer pump station that's undersized. Lower cost fix for that particular basin. It's actually a fairly newer, new basin. We've got some high, high flows in there, so we need to figure out maybe why that is. But that, that basin, I, I think is a little, I think of it as a little differently, because it's mostly pump stations. It's not large pipes that need to be replaced right at this time. It also represents about 50%, if you look at the total acreage there, there's 163 acres total that are, that are impacted by these, these constrained pipelines. And about 50% of them fall in the, in that Settlers Point's location. So, Jim, you may have been right about the acreage. I guess what I was focused on is the acreage that's actually.
The red.
In the red. In the red, we're showing properties that are, that have either development potential or redevelopment potential. So, we've tried to highlight those. And so, the chart kinda references what, you know, what those are. So, you know, just kinda trying to get a summary. And Tony and I have talked a little bit about building permits, and for the most part, the building permits that are already in the queue, we don't see them being problematic. They're small additions or, you know, remodels. It's not our intent to slow or stop those from occurring. But, you know, any, anything big, like a subdivision, a, a zone change, would be affected by this, yes.
One of those red squares is Mount Pleasant School, correct?
It is, yeah, it is. Half of, well, the, the piece on the point.
Yes, I think that's the big piece, right?
Right.
The piece on the point where the annex building is would go towards the Hazelwood area, and the bigger piece would go towards Lynn Avenue.
Okay.
So, we'll show, and we're gonna, let's see if there's, I think that's all we needed to cover on that slide. This one here is just, we've, we've got more details than this, but we just wanted to share with you some of the costs associated with the pipeline, or what we're calling sewer upgrades for hydraulic capacity. So, Brown and Caldwell has estimated that at a little over $3 million worth of repair work to complete. Again, let's see, we're calling this slide the interim process for constrained areas. This is the first time we've used the M-word, but I think we're gonna start off with using the M-word. We're, we're likely to see a moratorium in these areas, and Bill's gonna talk a little bit about that. But we want, we see, once we, once we decide we're moving down the moratorium, or I think that's kinda been decided for us, but once we move into that and get through that, what I understand is there's a process by which we would adopt a public facility strategy, which may not be very different than what our master plan conclusions say. Adopt rates and SDCs that support the master plan recommendations, and then move forward with those solutions. So, we'll talk about some of the process and program needs as well later in the presentation. So, Bill, this is, this is your slide here.
Thanks, John.
We've got three, we've got three slides.
Yeah. Thanks. And, you know, this is, I think, the part that John and.
Jim.
Jim have already talked about is really the, the critical piece, that, you know, we know that we have capacity issues. And the first step is, what are those issues, and how do we fix them? And John and Jim have really done that. The next step is, okay, now that we know that we have capacity issues, what can we do to prevent it from getting worse? And, and that's, that's where this piece comes into it. You know, we, luckily, a large part of this is built out, some of it isn't. But, you know, the, in terms of impacting people, that's a good thing. In terms of funding, it's maybe not, not such a good thing, because SDCs can only be used for capacity increasing pieces. So, there's a, there's a give and take there. You know, but, but with, so there's, there's, you know, what, what, so, this is not the first time capacity issues have come up in, for cities in Oregon. Wilsonville went through a water moratorium about, I think it was the late 90s. City of Lakeside down in Coos County had a sewer moratorium in the early 2000s. City of Dunes City out, down in Lane County has had a sewer moratorium. And we're kinda looking at those, those cities and seeing what happened and where it goes. But there are two basic strategies that a city can use in dealing with situation to avoid getting things worse. One is getting worse. One is to adopt a moratorium, essentially saying, "We're not gonna allow new development that's going to increase the use of sewer capacity." That doesn't stop all development, because, you know, there, there are things that people can do in terms of redevelopment or other things that aren't gonna have an impact on sewer. But to the extent somebody wants to subdivide, add new housing, there, that's, that's what this is aimed at. And so, you know, moratorium, there's a specific statute that governs it, and you've gotta provide notice to DLCD and other groups, make written findings showing that, you know, what the problem is, how, how we're going to attack it, and also show that housing and economic development needs of the area effective have been accommodated to the extent possible. So, we'll, we'll have to look at that if, if we could head down that path. And must be limited to those areas actually affected by the constraints. If there is a moratorium, it can be extended for up to two years. You know, once you declare the moratorium, you've got 60 days to put together a corrective program. Then you have a six-month period, and then you can get up to three additional six-month periods. The other path, and these are not mutually exclusive, you can tack one on the other, is to have a public facility strategy, which is a, a different way to go. This would also require notice to DLCD and hearing. You gotta make written findings. And in particular, you've gotta look at whether there is a rapid increase in rate or intensity of land development that was unanticipated, or there was some type of catastrophic, catastrophic event. So, we'll have to, to look at that. We gotta find a, a clear and objective and detailed description of actions and practices the city's gonna take to deal with these issues. And the public facility strategy gives you five years to resolve these issues. The first period allows up to two years, and then you can get up to three, one-year strategy, one-year extensions. So, in total, if you were to tack on a moratorium and a public facility strategy, you could get up to seven years to, to deal with these issues. But that's, those are the option, two of the options that you have. There, there may well be other ones. And, you know, not all areas are gonna be affected the same. As you saw, some fixes were, were easier than others, and there's some prioritizing that, that the, we'd have to take in terms of where do we focus our efforts first, and, and how to go about doing that. So, a, a, at this point, you know, the, you know, it is a work session to talk about things, and wanted to, to give you the options that we have. And I'll turn it back over to, to John at this point to, to talk a little further about the future conditions that we may be seeing.
Actually, Jim's gonna take this one.
The next round of modeling that we did is the 10-year, the future condition. This is what we're looking at at a full build-out. So, areas that are currently identified as being in the urban growth boundary, they would be brought into the city at this point. Areas within the city that are currently underdeveloped, they would be developed to their full potential. So, we're looking at the maximum flow condition that we can envision at this particular time. Again, the 10-year event is the event that we're using for sizing facilities. So, we wanna put pipe and, and pumping systems in the ground that can handle at least the 10-year storm event, so that we have even less potential for backups in the basements or, or spilling from the sewer out into the environment. The results that we get in running the 10-year are, again, the 10-year is a three-and-a-half inch rain event compared to the five-year three-inch rain event. And, and yet, there's not a huge difference in the system. The areas that we had problems before, the, the ones that I named downtown, 12th, 13th, Lynn, Division, Hazelwood, they're still problem areas. They're just a little bit worse now than they were before. We do see a few additional problems down in the southeast, the gravity sewer downstream of Settlers Point, as well as the Settlers Point Pump Station. These now have some capacity issues. We're seeing some capacity issues along Highway 213 at a couple of different locations. Again, this is a Tri-City sewer, so outside of our current focus in terms of what's going on in those sewers. But basically, the same locations, but more surcharging, and a couple more instances of where we would actually see flooding from, from what we saw with the five-year storm event.
I guess I'll just add, we are talking to Wes. We shared with them a draft copy of our master plan. So, we are moving forward with having those, at least sharing that information with them. And there is a INI study that they're also kicking off that we're participating in. Again, Eric Wargren is, is staffing that, and so. Again, Eric Worgren is staffing that, and so we're moving in that direction as well.
That was gonna be one of my questions, is it belongs to tri-city. I mean, how much influence do we have for their pipes?
Well, they're regulated under DQ like we're regulated under DQ. So if we're seeing what the model's predicting, then we're gonna see overflows.
Right.
And I think it's just another master planning effort that has to happen there. For the most part, their overflows and surcharge don't represent, you know, system flooding and as much in the way of moratorium. But yeah, still something we need to work through.
So after we've identified the problems, the next round of modeling that we do is to figure out what size pipes would we need and what size flows do we have in the system so we can size our pump stations. So this is a figure that's out of the draft master plan, and this is the north end of the city. And here, at the same locations that we were showing flooding or surcharging before, we're now showing projects. So 12th Street, 13th Street, Division Street, Lynn, these are all identified currently as sewer upgrade projects where we'll probably increase by about one diameter of the size of those particular sewers. We've identified on the north side of the north view here of the city, the Catamount pump station needs to have some upgrades as well.
So you're doubling the diameter? Or I misunderstood what you said?
No, not doubling. So if we had a 12-inch pipe, which is a pretty standard size, we would go up one size in terms of what's available. So you'd go from a 12-inch to a 15. What's interesting about pipe...
The area's gonna be bigger.
What's interesting about it is when you go up one pipe size, you're pretty much doubling the capacity of that pipe.
Okay.
Yeah. That's very good. Another thing that we do show on here to keep in mind are the blue lines. These are what we call sewer extensions. These are sewers that currently don't exist. These are sewers that would need to be constructed in the future as part of growth and new development. And they're basically conceptual in terms of, this is what we're envisioning would be required to serve those areas in the future. Here, you can see the Park Place concept area in yellow. We also show a few sewers, extensions within the city so that we can service lots that currently are not adjacent to or do not have direct access to existing sanitary sewers.
The key point on those, though, Jim, is that we're not actually funding those. We're just showing them, and we're estimating the cost, but they're not included in any of our calculations.
The extensions are not built into any of the rate...into the rate analysis. That will be performed later. So this is the south view of the city. We have several pump stations that are gonna need some upgrades, both for hydraulic reasons and for maintenance reasons. Here, you can see Hazelwood as well, and some more information on what's happening on the tri-city sewer in terms of some surcharging within it. We have two major concept areas on the south side, the Beaver Creek area, as well as the south end concept area that we're showing a conceptual plan for developing sewers in those areas. Now, I want to comment real...just briefly on that. We're showing these pipes being upgraded or upsized. And in addition to doing that, we're gonna talk a little bit about infiltration and inflow, INI. And that represents another strategy that one can use to reduce the amount of flow in the system so that you may not have to potentially upsize certain pipes. So the modeling that we've done has identified the hydraulic restrictions that we're envisioning in the collection system. There's a whole nother class of what we consider capital improvements that we need to consider. And the focus of those types of problems are what we call the rehabilitation and replacement program. So I'll refer to that as the RNR program. The purpose of an RNR program for any municipality is to basically address the structural and operational needs of your collection systems. Your sewers, your collection systems, they do not last forever. It's hard to give a precise time as to how long they will last, but generally, in the industry, we look at them and say typically, a sewer will last from 75 to 100 years. And then they'll fall. They'll fail eventually. They're like anything else, they wear out with time. And we're all just starting, like within the Oregon area, to have sewers that are starting to get to be that old. So everyone is dealing with the fact that, oh, yeah, we need to reinvest in these sewers because they're starting to create problems. And the kind of problems that they can create are with structural failures, are backups where you have something collapse and it backs up into a house. A very severe situation would be a sinkhole. We've seen evidence of that in the Portland area. And the other thing that happens as your pipes start to fail and as cracks develop and as joints open up around manholes or within pipe sections, is we start to see more and more infiltration and inflow getting into those sewers. So that's basically groundwater or rainwater that is getting into the sewers and taking away capacity from those sewers. And I want to talk a little bit about both of those, a little bit more here on the next slides. I mentioned that age is a factor in sewer condition. We've taken a look at the city's records and have found that about seven miles of the collection system are 75 years or more in age. So they've been in service a fairly long time. It doesn't mean they're gonna fail tomorrow. Some of those sewers may last quite a bit longer. But statistically, some of those sewers are probably in bad shape. And we've just seen that from looking at many, many collection systems. So once you get beyond 50 years or so, you really need to be thinking about, you know, how long are they gonna last? But age by itself is not a factor. There are pipes out there that are 100 years old that work just well. We would prefer to rely upon inspections. The city has inspected portions of the city, and from the inspections that we have to date, we have found that about 8% of the sewers inspected so far represent what we consider grade four or five, which is pipe that's not in very good condition. A grade four is in poor condition. Grade five is a little bit worse and really ought to be taken care of or taken a look at very soon. When you extrapolate that 8% to the entire collection system, because the whole system hasn't been inspected yet, that represents about 12 miles of the system that are probably in a poorer condition and ultimately will need to be...become part of that RNR program. I mentioned age impacts the rehab needs. It helps us understand...it'll influence what sewers need to be rehabbed or repaired or even replaced. And these condition and the age together influence the amount of INI that we get into the system. And there's gonna be a lot of focus on that here in the near future. So sewer flows are made up of two different sources. There's the base sanitary flow, so that's the flow that we see in our sewers when we turn water on in our homes. The INI component is what we see when it rains and the water gets into the collection system. Didn't work very well. Let me go back.
We should probably move forward.
I was gonna say, it worked very well.
Yeah. What happened there? So the bottom line is that the inflow and infiltration within the sewer is many times larger than the base flow. It is a much larger number than what we would see in just the base flow by itself. So we did flow monitoring at the front end of this project, and the table on the right shows you the results of that. And the point I want to make here is what we call the ratio of the peak flow. So that's the total flow, the base flow and the INI compared to the dry weather flow, which is primarily just your base flow. And the ranges are from three to 13x, with most of that being in the five, six, seven range. So you can think of it as six times...the overall flow is six times what the base flow is. So it's not the sanitary flow that's causing undersized sewer. It's the INI that we get into the system that's causing our sewers to be undersized. So I want to move into the overall program cost. And we've talked already about hydraulics. So there's different components to this program. We've talked about the hydraulics and the modeling and how that's helped us identify what the problems are and what the solutions are. That's also helped us understand what we need to do at the pump stations in terms of the flows to those. I'm defining what we call an RNR program, and the focus of the RNR program is to address the structural and operational needs within the sewer system and to help us reduce INI throughout the system. Because if we can reduce some of the INI throughout the system, we may not have to replace as many pipes. A fourth category that we have here that just talked briefly about is, we really need to do more what I'll call INI investigations. So this is additional flow monitoring, smoke testing, and modeling to really understand where the INI is coming from. Because often, it can be a very isolated area. And we've had models at the bottom of the basins, so we're looking at big areas or monitoring. And ultimately, you'll want to move up into the basins to define more accurately where the INI is coming from. So we have four...those four categories that we're gonna look at. So here's a post-capital program that extends out for basically 12 years. So the three columns on the right represent the first four years, the second four years, and the third four years of the program. So within the first four years, we want to address the sewer upgrades, and this is the hydraulic portion of this, that where we have undersized sewers because of hydraulic reasons. And this ties in with the whole talk of potentially having a moratorium. So if we can fix those sewers within the next four years or so, we'll get past that...we'll be able to pass the flow for the model. Similarly, we can spend $291,000 a year for the next four years and address the hydraulic needs of the pump stations. Now, in the longer term, pump stations are mechanical systems, and they need upgrades. Equipment wears out, pumps wear out, electrical systems fail. So we're budgeting for those about $100,000 a year to keep the pump stations in good working order. Now, to fund the RNR program, to address those structural needs...
The two Rs, research and repair?
Rehab and repair.
Rehab and repair. Okay.
So what we've looked at here is, we've got some sewer inspection information that has identified the poor sewers in the system. Those are the ones that we want to take care of first. So we'll start off addressing that known...those known sewers to the tune of about $307,000 a year for the program to address those needs. Once we get beyond four years and as we get more information on the condition of all the sewers, we'll want to ramp that up to about 1.3, and then ultimately, you know, nine years out or so, about 1.6. To give you an alternative number for what a rehab program might look like, if you assume the useful life of a sewer is 100 years, one strategy is to go and say, well, let's replace or rehab 1% every year, and we'll keep up with it, you know, we'll stay ahead of it. If you do that, you're looking at about a $2.3 million program. So we're not taking that approach. We're recommending an approach that's based upon actual data from the sewer inspections. But what that's telling me, and what I want to share with you, is that we could start off with a lower number, but as time goes by and the sewers degrade even more, and this may be, you know, future generations even, you're gonna need to fund it at a greater level because they're just gonna get worse. I mentioned the INI investigations, the smoke testing and further flow monitoring. That'll be required for some time, and we're looking at that as being...and this will include the sewer inspection program that we need to complete at $182,000 a year. So when you take that all together, we're looking at a capital program, and this is just capital, of about 1.4 in the first four years. And that'll increase by about $200,000 a year in the second four-year period, and again, in the third four-year period.
I guess the only thing I'll add to that is, right now, we spend about half a million dollars on capital, so looks more like a million-dollar kind of shortfall. And then I think it's year 1920, we'll have paid...we pay about $500,000 a year in debt reimbursement for, I think, the sewer separation project that happened 15 years ago, 12 or 15 years ago. So that'll be paid off. So, you know, we still need to do some analysis. And Jim, if you go to the next slide, I'll take that one on. So first of all, I guess there's several things that we need to do, and one of them's a rate and system development charge analysis that typically follows your master plan adoption. But in this case, because we see these problems and the desire to move forward with solutions quickly, we've already tapped our finance department. So Wyatt and Ryan in the finance department have provided a great amount of detail that the FCS group, or John Gilarducci, who you've heard from before, he did our water rate analysis, he's...they take that information from us and they, you know, we go through a variety of conversations about, you know, not only capital but operational needs, and he'll bring back to us a rate analysis. And so I guess those are a couple of things. And then I guess the other thing is, Tony and his group have been pretty helpful, and as has Bill and our attorneys, keeping us aligned with the legislative approval process. So we know we've got a lot of work yet to do on that, but we'll keep moving forward on that. And then, you know, our existing...can you move that slide forward, Jim? We've got some program things. We need to continue our TV inspection program, probably get more of that done, more smoke testing, more flow monitoring, the kind of things that you do to figure out where your system's really leaking. And get refocused on capital improvements that, you know, we've spent a lot of our money in the past on pump stations, so we need to move forward with that. And then DOT policies and regulations, things like roof drain disconnects, a lot of cities have programs where they encourage property owners to disconnect roof drain downspouts. And you saw that growth in the '90s. My sense is, if you think we might be missing some of our inspections and things that we need to get done out in the field in the '90s with all that growth, it's pretty certain to me that we probably missed some things. And we may see roof drains that are illegally connected to our system. And then we probably need to look a lot harder at private laterals most of the time. That's probably the part of the weakest link of the whole system. So we've got a fair amount of work on that front as well. And, you know, this is our first presentation for you folks, so it's our intent to kind of regroup and figure out next steps. Hopefully, with some rate analysis information, we'll be able to bring that for you again and working on the kind of the moratorium or those kind of solutions. I know that's gonna kick off real soon. So that's really all we have.
Questions? I guess I'll start off with one. I know back when we had a moratorium, which was, I think, ended at about 80-something. There was attempt to separate wastewater and stormwater systems in that period, and then I think you discovered there were a lot of them that in fact didn't get separated. Do we know that it's pretty well all separated throughout the city now? Or are there areas where they still need to be separated?
I think there's areas where we still find catch basins tied to sanitary pipelines, and there's no place for those catch basins because there's not a storm drain system available for them. So, you know, and sometimes these programs develop both, you gotta build the storm system, or you gotta abandon the sanitary system and make it your, you know, your storm. So there's a few places like that. I think mostly up in the Park River Crest neighborhood, to where we know of a couple of those.
Now, I assume the high-storm events have another issue, too. That means ultimately, if we aren't able to deal with them, that our treatment facilities get jammed up because they're dealing with a greater volume of water coming through the system. And while this is an issue for tri-cities, it is an issue for us as well.
As was mentioned, tri-city is just starting an INI investigation. And I'm not directly tied to that, but my understanding is the objective is that, you know, they want to look at INI throughout the entire service area. And this is a common problem for every city in the Willamette Valley. So they want to look at that and figure out, well, where are the sources? Who's contributing the most? Where's it coming from? And then the analysis that will be done... And then, the analysis that will be done is, they'll look at cost effectiveness. And they'll look at, you know, do we build a larger treatment plant and larger interceptor sewers at, you know, X cost? Or is it less expensive to go and fix the small sewers, you know, further up in the basin? And the results of their analysis will help illuminate, you know, where those situations are, where it may be cost effective. You know, is it in West Lynn? Is it in Oregon City? Is it last done? Is it a combination of different areas that might be cost effective, too, to do the I and I abatement?
So-
The new developments we have, of course, we're trying to get retention services, you know, detention services, so-
That's stormwater, though.
I know that's stormwater, but I presume it reduces the impact of inflow and infiltration in the process. Does it not? I mean, if you're getting water off the roads into another system, there's less chance of water flowing over into the manholes, for example, and even perhaps keeping the water, water level, the groundwater level at a lower, lower level during those kinds of events.
Possibly, yeah.
I can see where you could get some of that. Most of the I and I gets into the system through defective pipes, you know, bad joints, cracks. There's the, what we call the inflow, which is the direct connection where we have a storm catch basin tied to the sanitary sewer, either by accident or by purpose. That's a direct connection, so all the stormwater goes directly into it. Those are the areas that we want to look at. You know, you look at, how can we reduce the number of cracks? How can we seal them up? Where can we cost-effectively do the separations so that we no longer have storm drain, catch basins connected to the sanitary? There's a lot of places that, you know, they're throughout, you know, throughout the Willamette Valley where there really isn't another option, so they're still connected unless you spent a lot of money. So you'd want to look carefully at those in terms of, you know, where does it make sense to put another pipe in to deal with that?
Any other questions?
Oh, yes. Commissioner Roth and I served on the water rate rollback issue. At that time, we talked about the water pipes needing to be replaced, and we needed to raise the rates and that kind of thing. And now, we're looking at sewer rates. Has the sewer rate budget been bumping up at least 3% every year? Or when was the last time it was increased?
It has increased. I believe it's 3% every year, but there was, I want to recall, I don't know why I don't remember this, but it seems to me like it was 14 or 19 years where we didn't raise sewer rates at all. So we did fall far behind. It was some number like that, and it was not that long ago either. But yes, we have made small rate increases annually for at least the last 10 or 12 years.
Last six, there's a six-year resolution with the final rate increase was July 1 of last year. So this year is when that resolution's no longer in place. And prior to that, six years, there was a 14-year period where there were no rate increases.
And that is just very disheartening to me. Because every year, every rate in our lives, whether it's gas for the car or gas for the home, every year, rates go up. And it is just crazy that the cities do this. Although, I understand they might have had the motive of wanting to save their citizens' money and look good and get reelected. I get that, but we have to think of the future. So on the future end, the pipes, I'm thinking if we invest this money, I think we have to put even bigger pipes in so that in 50 years, we don't have the same problem. I don't know. Is that realistic? I don't know. But our city's only going to grow, and we have to maybe think about doubling everything that we look at today. Because if our, 100 years ago, if the people knew what the sewer problem was then, I mean, what would it look like then? Maybe they'd been saving for a new sewer system. I don't know. But I just think about the future, and I hate to see our citizens have to pay more and more and more. So kind of what would that look like, John? With the water pipes and the sewer pipes for a rate increase?
Well, we'd like to defer that question until we get some responsible answers to you. I hate to share something and then be off even a little bit. But, but I hear what you're saying, and I think in reality, we probably will look hard at those pipelines that, you know, some pipelines, we're going to see reductions because we need to attack them from the reduction mode, and other ones, we need to attack from the, you know, create more capacity mode.
So these pipes, water and sewer, can they be next to each other? So can you dig it up once and put two pipes in? Not that simple, is it, John?
Yeah, there's also laws that prevent pipelines from, water and sewer pipelines from being too close together.
I knew you were going to tell me no, John, but I just had to ask that question. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Some states actually allow that, so, you know, in Oregon-
Well, I'm just thinking if you're tearing it up once, why not just kind of do it all? But anyway, so kind of tonight, we're looking at a moratorium, either for, if I wrote this down correctly, for two years or seven, depending upon? Is that what you're saying?
And I don't think we're looking at it right now as much as sort of a heads-up that we're probably going to be coming back with the recommendation because of, you know, the surcharges that we really, you know, we're still getting our hands around, you know, first, the extent of the problem. And I think we've got a good handle on that. And then, the next thing is, what's the fix? And can we get an idea? Is it something that can be done through rates in a year? That might be one thing. If it's going to take, you know, five years, that's a different recommendation.
Yeah.
And so, we're not looking at it right now, but you can expect to see it soon.
And I need to add to that, too, because, so before we can recommend which of those solutions and how long the solution would be, we need to have that rate study done so we know how long it's going to take to get the money to fix certain things. And then, we're going to be recommending to you prioritizing certain of these. And keep in mind, the moratorium is, as much as I know, no city wants one of those, because that really is harmful to your economic development, your tax base, your job creation, all the things you want to do. I think we're going to be able to limit moratoriums to basin-specific areas.
Okay.
But even before that, what we have right now is a de facto moratorium, because somebody who applies for a significant redevelopment of any kind in one of those basins is now facing denial from plan review, because you can't make the, you can't make it worse. So we have the information, we just, and we're basically implementing a de facto moratorium at the staff level, but it's not the kind that we really need. And we need you guys to take action on that at some point, but we'll come back to you when we have the rate analysis done. It's great to be a historic city, except when you're talking about sewer pipes. One other thing, too, I want to mention, I think it was a little over a year ago, Commissioner Roth and I had a very poignant heart-to-heart conversation about a constituent of hers who had been through one of these backups. And I think you were just bewildered, like, what do we need to do to fix this problem? And fix it right, and fix it once, and be done?
Yes.
And we all know how many times, I think, Doug, in your time on the commission, I bet it's been dozens of times that you've had to listen to one appeal or another about something like this. And Nancy, I've been processing the claims, and we know that our claims history is almost as great as our city history as far as the activity line.
Right, right.
And, and all of that is feeding into, it's brought us to this place. Now, we've got the problem identified. We're very close to identifying the solutions. It's not a good problem to have, but, you know, it does show that can kicking down the road for 14 years has a really detrimental effect. And so, now, we're in a position where we know the, what we need to do, and it's just a matter of bucking it up and doing it.
I did want to address two things that the city manager said and stress that. There hasn't been a denial yet, and we're not in a, you know, moratorium quite yet. I think things come through the pipeline. We know, you know, what the, whether they can meet the criteria.
Or not.
Sorry.
Or not.
Just drop it in the bucket.
Those things come through the pipeline.
I've been able to avoid it all, you know, the whole time. But, you know, we know what the capacity is, and so, you know, we'll have to deal with that. But, you know, we don't have a moratorium right now. The other thing that I want to stress is something that David said, is it's not citywide. There are specific basins where we have the issue. The majority of the city, there isn't a problem. It's only in certain areas.
But according to you, we're going to get those problems.
Yes.
So we have to be prepared for them.
Well, and I think Alita, Alita gets the brunt of this as a city engineer with development applications that are coming through the door.
Yes.
And so, we've been scrambling on that a little bit. And we, you know, we don't want to slow down the economic development in Oregon City, but at the same time, approving development when we know there's downstream problem is irresponsible.
And I'd like to say one more thing about the I and I piece. Last week, you passed a resolution dedicating just a small portion of your right-of-way fees to address problems like this. But I and I that comes from all of the three cities in Tri-City and Oregon City has more than 50% of the customer base of the district. All that goes into the plant, and it generates wear and tear and treatment expense and everything else. It's basically, and I think, I think you were saying, they're going to have to do an analysis to see, is it, is it cheaper to fix the I and I problem, or cheaper to fix, or cheaper to treat stormwater that isn't sewage?
Right.
You know, that's, that's basically what happens. And our treatment costs are direct hit at the plant for this. So the responsible thing to do is try to minimize your I and I. But we will have to crunch numbers to see what's the best approach, and we will be working as closely as we can with Tri-City staff. I know, I think their, their staff are, really are concerned about I and I, and we, we don't always agree, of course, the city members of the district, but I think on this one, there's a lot of agreement that we need to fix this, and everyone needs to pitch in and do what they can.
That's good.
Yep.
So would this be in a capital of that amount, correct? It's for capital. So is there grants out there that we can get? Or are there restrictions on any funds that we have that we cannot use for grants? I mean, for capital, or, I mean?
Well, we'll, again, ask those same questions of FCS group. You know, most of the programs that I see are loans, low-interest loans, and those are, those are things that we're going to consider as well, and they may be, you know, a way to go. So, you know, we'll be asking those questions.
Your million dollars short in your budget to fix the problem. And I'm pretty sure David doesn't have the extra. And I know Wyatt doesn't have the extra million.
Well, one thing, one thing to keep in mind, because we're going to have to look at all the, how to finance the fix.
Yes.
Because you're, you're in a city, if you think about the cost of elections and revenue bonds, because that's really what we would be using probably to fix this, would be revenue bonds or the rates, which are essentially revenue bonds without paying bond counsel and everybody else. So I think what we're going to try to do is look at a solution that's the cheapest and quickest solution for your city overall.
Absolutely.
And that may not be a big bond election where you have all those costs. It might be, let's tackle this thing one basin at a time, one problem at a time, in this amount, over a period of years. And I think that's the analysis we need to do, so we feel comfortable making a recommendation. And we'll try to bring back a couple of different versions, and then you folks can choose from those, which one you want to do.
Thank you.
Would a moratorium affect annexations for sewer, or septic abandonment?
If it's in one of the affected basins, it potentially would.
So then, what would happen to those people that have a collapsed septic or cesspool?
I think, you know, I don't want to throw up general solutions. I think, like we talked about, in those basins that we know have constrained, we'll want to look at those at a case-by-case basis and make a determination. You know, it may be that we focus some dollars on a particular basin to reduce that I and I by the amount of increase that that smaller problem or smaller situation like a failed septic system might create. I just, I don't want to throw up a barrier that says, you know, those kind of situations aren't going to work for us. I think that they're, for one, there's a lot of areas on the fringe of Oregon City that aren't even affected by this. So, you know, I think we've got, we'll, we'll have to just deal with those on a case-by-case basis.
I'm just going to make a comment, of course. We're in our own biennial budget system. The next commission that comes forward is going to have to look at these issues.
Yes.
David phrased it just a little differently than I thought we phrased it in the resolution. I think when, when we have a notion of how much the right-of-way funding fees are coming in, and to actually diligently look at the kinds of, the kinds of things that we can use with that additional revenue, and since a lot of those happen to deal with sewer, sewer right-of-ways, you know, some, some serious consideration should be given to, on the, on behalf of a group I won't be part of, to, to actually do some prioritization in that regard.
Yeah.
Mayor, your resolution last week was only for the Tri-City portion of revenue.
I under, I under, and that was dead for a specific reason.
Yeah.
But the point is that, as those funds come in, and, and the right-of-ways are being, includes our own payments, too.
Absolutely.
How much, to, what are we going to use those monies to actually deal with those systems that are in those right-of-ways? And I think it's a, it's a question that needs to be really debated in the budgetary process.
One of the disappointing realities is that even under the rosiest scenario, the new right-of-way ordinance doesn't come close to the cost of what we're dealing with here. But it's, it's still a start.
It's a start.
And, and frankly, the 191 that was estimated from Tri-City is a start on I and I. It's 191 more than we had last year. So it is a start in trying to fix that problem.
It's a little tiny drop in the big bucket.
Absolutely.
Of all the money we need for our pipes.
Yeah, and your, part of your right-of-way fees, if you remember, were dedicated as like a right-of-way manager position, which we now have filled. So you do have some restrictions on those funds. But there, you know, we'll know more as we get through that process, what those revenues are.
I just had another thought. You mentioned that many places in Oregon are looking at this because we're all getting about the same age right now. Is there a collective or a bargaining unit that can buy a pipe at a huge discount because of lots of cities facing this?
Well, we use, we use some of those collective buying powers right now for our water lines, for instance. So we buy off contracts and bid, bids through the city of Portland. So those kind of things do exist. You know, on a larger scale, I guess, haven't been in a situation where we've gone out seeking, you know, high volumes of pipe. But really, the pipe cost is not-
Not the big deal, huh?
No, it's really not.
It's a commodity.
Yeah, it's just, it's just one small component, you know, and when you look at the per-foot cost for these things, it's, it's the labor.
I was going to say, it's the labor, isn't it?
Yeah, it really is. I mean, the other thing that I find interesting about sewers is, a lot of these sewers were built back in the day when they didn't have the, the regulations that we have for safety and, you know, the standards that we have for backfill and, you know, construction techniques and testing techniques for making sure we've done it right. It used to just kind of, you know, be a crew. They had lots of man-hours, I guess, but, so, it's just, yeah, it's-
Is this the same kind of pipe that we're talking about? That, you know, we talked, I forgot what it was, the components that made up the pipe that we're talking about for the water pipes?
Typically, use different pipe for sewer.
Different type of pipe.
Usually, it's cheaper.
Okay, good. Well, that's a plus. Thank you.
They're all so bigger.
I'm just wanting to-
I mean, to be honest with you, the sewer numbers that we looked at were much more favorable than the water numbers.
Yeah, I know.
Any other questions?
I'm just glad that we're planning for this.
Yes, thank you.
I know this was kind of fleshed upon us, no pun intended.
Yes.
But, you know, poor planning kind of got us to the situation.
Yes.
So now, just moving forward, planning and budgeting for this is going to be challenging, but something we have to do.
Oh, and one comment about the smoke test. When you do the smoke test, do you notify people? Because, you know, it kind of goes into their homes and into their buildings.
It's not supposed to.
And they kind of freak out.
Yeah, Betty, they didn't used to. It was cheaper to do it back then. Now, we have to send out lots of those.
No connection to the American Medical Marijuana.
And like I said, Southport did, did smoke testing in our neighborhood, which is a neighborhood that's currently shared by, I think, at least two-thirds of us. And I never saw anything coming out that actually dealt with that. I mean, they weren't, they weren't our innovation.
But sometimes if you get in the older sections.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm talking, that's why, that smoke was coming out all over the place. And I don't know that, I never saw anything coming to recommendations to citizens to do anything about it, you know? They did a study, and I don't know any outcomes. So if we do one, I presume we're going to have outcomes.
Yeah, that's the intent.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Thank you.
Now for the frosting fee, so we hope. What do you see frosting?
Put the frosting on the cake.
Tony, let's hear it.
Okay.
We're done with sewer.
I'm going to save that till the end.
I almost said everybody keeps. See all that smoke's coming out? Yeah.
So while Christina is getting up the slide of the document we're passing around, just a couple of things we'd like to give you an update on where we're at in the land use process and the tentative potential purchase of the property by Mega Rock LLC with Peter McKittrick, the parameters of that, the upcoming open house that we're going to have in the next couple of weeks here, and then a review of the partners' group meeting, which as you recall is made up of two elected officials and the CEO from each of our partners that we had on Monday morning. So just give you an update on the discussions that were had there and where we're heading at this point. So, right now, a company called Mega Rock LLC is a Washington State LLC, has put in a purchase price of 2.2 million for the property. They're currently have down $50,000 and then another $50,000 are due upon approval of the proposed purchase by ODOE, Oregon Department of Energy, which has a $1.163 million lien on the property, and Sempra, which has a $4.23 million lien on the property. There's a total of 5.75 million owed, of which 455,000 are taxes on the property. Right now, the agreement hasn't been signed or taken to the court, but essentially, ODOE will accept $825,000 rather than the total amount that they're owed of 1.163 as part of this deal. They still need to agree to all this, but this is the framework of it. And Sempra would take 50% of the net sales proceeds after payment to ODOE, property taxes and cost of sale have been subtracted out. So essentially, they're willing to take less than what they're owed and for what their liens are on the property. Right now, April 28th is the overbid date. So essentially, until that date, someone else could come in, overbid, the minimum overbid is $100,000 over the sale price, so minimum price, minimum offer would be 2.3. But it's also contingent, the trustee also takes into consideration what the contingencies are. So right now, Mega Rock LLC has no contingencies and they propose to close three days after. So essentially, May 1st, a very quick close. So the trustee, if someone did come in and overbid, would look at what the contingencies were. So for example, when Langley was in, they had a 12-month and a 24-month contingency. Obviously, the trustee would not find that very appealing when you have someone who's willing to close in three days.
Wasn't there a date of April 21st or something?
April 21st was the date that we agreed to have our first planning commission meeting with the trustee.
Okay.
And that's the date that we've been talking about. So the trustee, and I believe you forwarded a letter from the trustee requesting that we continue that hearing date so that the potential buyer has time to get an understanding of the property and the process that we've been through. So in place of that date, since we've been talking about that date for seven, eight months now, we're actually going to hold an open house here at City Hall from 6 o'clock to 8 on April 21st. We'll have staff here and be happy to answer folks' questions, update them on the process, where we're at, how we got here. So it would just be another opportunity to contact the citizens since that date has been out there. We have advertised on our website and through our contacts that the hearing has been postponed and that it has been replaced with an open house to try and let folks know who've been following us throughout this process. So are there any questions about where we're at with the potential sale?
No. Go by it again. They've actually made a financial commitment, correct?
They have put down $50,000.
Okay. That didn't happen with Langley or not? Or do you know?
Langley did. Right, so Mega Rock's deal proposal is that they put down, they're going to put down 100,000, but 50,000 is upfront. 50,000 is due when ODOE and Sempra agree to the terms of the deal. Once they agree, they would need to deposit the other 50,000. I don't recall if Langley ever put money down or not. I don't believe that they did.
So this is sort of a first for us, isn't it?
It is.
That's good.
So that means they're very interested.
You know, that we're that much closer to the overbid date. For me, I just want this process over. I want somebody to call time on the musical chairs.
Yes.
So that we can move forward. And as you know, as long as it's in bankruptcy, the trustee has to sign off on that land use application or we can't rezone, we can't do much. And so we've got this great plan that we've got all this public momentum behind and that's why we're going to go ahead and have an open house, because we want people to know we're still working on this, we're still taking input, we still care what they think, and we want to educate people as much as we can on the plan.
And they have a quick closing date too, so that's.
Yeah, and a motivated trustee who's, I think, basically running out of funds to continue this dance. I want to draw your attention. I don't know if all of you got this, so I'm going to hand out additional copies and feel free to take a second copy if you already have one. There's some highlights on this. This is a report that was developed by Echo Northwest. Echo Northwest is a member of the consulting team and their responsibility in this project was to develop the economic impact analysis. So what you have in front of you is the economic impact analysis that shows approximately $3 million in new taxes that build out, several hundred to more than 1,000 new permanent jobs, and about double that for construction jobs, and an estimate of roughly 14 million in new annual visitor spending in Oregon City. So those are just some of the highlights from the study and as you can see, this helps us quantify, because a lot of us, we're trying to think about what are the possibilities for the site, for job creation, and this is the first time we've had anything scientific to sort of back up our grand ideas. So, you know, take that information, share it with anyone that you want to. We're going to pass on some of this to the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and the Business Alliance here in Oregon City, because we want people that are interested in business to know what some of the potential is on the site in a more meaningful way. So, yes.
Steve reported a different name in the newspaper. Is it the same? What was the name that Steve?
Steve from the Oregonian.
I thought there was a guy's name that started with an H.
Oh, Herb.
George Hyver.
Yeah, okay.
Part of the LLC.
And I actually got confused today and called it Hard Rock LLC.
Okay.
So, I wish. They might have better funding.
Are we going to have a Hard Rock here in the city?
There are Hard Rocks down there. I mean, it's a good fit, if you ask me. I think that's the extent of our report tonight.
We just wanted to update them on the partners' group.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And so the realizing the vision, action, and investment sheet that Christina had passed around, which we have up on the screen as well. So this is outlining where we've been, you know, starting with our preliminary investigations, teaching through diligence, framework master plan, and then right now, we're at the partners' commitment. So at the meeting on Monday morning, essentially, what it came down to was that, you know, based on the work we're doing, we believe that the investment in the Riverwalk and public access is a worthwhile investment as a first step on the project, regardless of who the property owner is. That the overwhelmingly supportive from the community and all the public outreach we did was for public access along the river and to the falls. It also shows that we need a significant world-class catalytic investment along the riverfront on this property to really change the market value for the rest of the property. There are also immediate economic impacts to the existing downtown through the tourism that would be drawn to a Riverwalk from 99E out to the dance floor at the end of the PGE Dam. So we have talked with the partners and, you know, this would qualify for significant other funding sources such as M-Tip, state lottery funds, natural area bond money to be brought to this process to create that Riverwalk in the first phase. And what we're looking at is the initial planning for this, which would be the public involvement, the construction documents that would be necessary, the demolition work, the documents that would be necessary of $4 million. And then we've tagged the preliminary number of $30 million for the public access and depending on how the construction phasing goes, we could either try to take that project down in one phase or we'd break it up into smaller phases. I think that's something that'll be determined at a later date. But, so we've talked with each of the partners on Monday and we asked them to work with their staff and to come back in 30 days and to really identify what commitments they can make from each of their jurisdictions to fulfill that $4 million that we need to do the initial construction drawing work. In that time, we're going to continue. We've had very good conversations with PGE for an access easement across the dam to the end. We'll continue to finalize that agreement hopefully and then work with whoever the property owner is, but the goal is 60 days to have at a minimum a public access easement along the riverfront for where that Riverwalk would be located from 99E to the PGE Dam. And with that, there were some questions, obviously, when you're talking about that type of a commitment. One of the concerns we had was to how do we formalize our partnership more than what it is right now? Right now, we've worked very well together. I think that the commitment from each of the stakeholders and the staff that they've brought and the financial resources is the only reason where we're at today, as quickly as we've been able to, with as much success of what I think we've had. But, you know, flushing out, whether it's through an IGA, identifying the governance structure, the decision-making process, there was a desire to have that more formally adopted in some fashion, which we will work on. We began to work on that when we started this process for the master planning, so we will resurrect that and try to bring forward a document that's acceptable to all the partners. But at the meantime, we asked that concurrently, that they're also continue to look at the funding part of this for the initial stage. We believe both of these can run concurrently and that if we continue to work as we have been, that a governance model is hopefully something that we can come to relatively quick agreement upon. So that was kind of in a nutshell, real quick. I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to add anything?
No, there were some good discussions and probably in terms of the need to go for a formal memorandum of understanding probably came to the top in terms of how we're receiving. Everybody's concerned about money naturally and I think developing this design to indicate where we're going to go will help us in terms of finding the monies and the commitment that we would need from other stakeholders other than just ourselves. Designed money we might be able to come up with on our own, but the 30 million for actually implementing.
Yes.
We do have some money from the state and there was a little bit of a window opened there at the meeting, that there could be additional help from the state. And of course, we know we're going to need to solicit federal assistance as well as all the partners, because the project is just too big for any, even for the partners that we have. So we're going to be looking at our own commitment as well, because, you know, obviously, given our size and our budget limitations as a pro-rata share percentage, we're the biggest contributors right now. But we also have the least amount of extra capacity as far as how much more we can bring. But we're going to be looking at our own budget internally, we're going to be looking at our SDCs to see what money can be leveraged there, because we want to come forward and make a stronger commitment if we can, because we're asking everybody else to do that and we think it's only fair for us to do the same.
And each of these meetings, there have been representatives not only of the elected boards, but also of staff. So that presence and that dialogue is really indicating to me that there's a strong commitment to go forward.
So do you think you're going to get all the partners to buy in on this memorandum of understanding?
That is certainly my goal.
We're going to start by trying to make sure all of our staff agree with all of their staff and vice versa. I think that's a big help.
That's good.
And, you know, they've worked really well together. I mean, a year ago, a year and a half ago, it was a challenge to get all the partners to make equal commitments at the staff level.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about.
Well, now we've got, I think the staff are working much more positively and much more, they come prepared, they come eager, they come to roll up their sleeves and do work and solve problems, and they've been just terrific.
And I'm very excited for that.
So I've been very pleased with that, yeah. And, you know, there's a, some of our partners have different degrees of political activity going on right now that might make that challenging, but I think most of them can see past political skirmishes to see that this project really transcends that and if it doesn't, it ought to. And so we'll be trying to make that happen as much as we can.
Yeah, I feel it's been good so far.
Good.
And this project is really pulling people together.
Yep.
There's a common vision here.
That's good.
So people understand that this is really an important project and this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so.
And then, I don't know, for this open house here in April, I don't know if you could give a list to the public as to where you're going to be offering tours and how do they sign up? Because that is, like Commissioner Roth said, that is a constant question.
Let me give you a little bit of a tour update. We have a long list of people that we have interacted with that want to be on a public tour and actually, we're looking at a potential May date. And we'll be sending out kind of invitations to them first and if we can, if there are extra spaces open.
Sure.
But we are working with the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition and a long-term goal next year for ideally maybe monthly Saturday tours.
Oh, nice.
So we're, I think we'll have one or two other, you know, tours that may be coming from the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, but there is a goal, this is a capacity building effort and, you know, we want to move forward on that. So that is our, we're in a little bit of a transition period, but we want to get through this hopefully May tour and we should be sending out those invitations to the people we already have on the list.
Oh, good.
Let them have first crack at it.
Yeah.
And then move forward on what's our kind of long-term monthly solution for tours.
Well, no, Tony had mentioned that you were going to offer tours at like the Versity Celebration.
Yes, we'll be doing that and then we'll still have our Friday tours.
So I think if you could maybe write down the opportunities where people could contact you.
Put that on the website. Yeah, we are very close to doing that. We're just kind of finalizing the details.
Although I do know some people that don't do technology, so.
Yeah. We just want to give first option to the people that have diligently put their name down.
Oh, absolutely.
Let them opportunity, but.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, we want to do that more and we know we're going to be doing this May tour and we should have that information up soon.
That's great. You guys should just hire people to do it.
Well, our goal is to train people to do it.
I love it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No.
Very good. With that, we'll go on to the city manager's report. He already gave one, but you want to go?
I already have it. You have it.
We have it, exactly. With that.
Oh, the library tour. That, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mom. We just really wanted to encourage you to attend if you could, because it's just such a great opportunity. Not only will Sid be along, but Dennis Humphries from Denver is flying out to do this and we're going to be able to visit Hood River, which is a Carnegie with an addition, and Camus Library, which is a historic library with an addition, in addition to Fort Vancouver Regional, which is one of the newest, biggest libraries. And it'll be a really good opportunity, so.
The date and time again?
The 14th, next Monday, 8:15, be here. We have the senior bus and bus driver taking us.
What time do you expect to be back, roughly?
We expect to be back around 5:00.
5:00?
Yeah. Pretty much an all-day thing. Even though it's just three libraries, we'll be driving a long distance to Hood River so far, but since we have our historic specialist with us, I just thought that would be, that's what we need to see, you know?
If there are commissioners that want to go and are concerned about getting back sooner, I'm willing to take a car and we can follow the bus and then if you need to come back earlier, I can bring you back earlier, so.
I'm planning to go, but I'm going to go on the bus and I got to check what the lyrics are to "A Hundred Bottles of Beer on the Wall."
I love it.